Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the Town of Carmel, January 9, 2025, Planning Board Meeting. First up on our, our agenda is a public hearing for all of the Forge Estates. Mike, you had no comments, correct?
I do not, this is on for a public hearing.
Okay, and Rich?
Same here.
Same here? No comments? Very good. Thank you. So with that, we'll open up to the audience, if anyone wishes to be heard on this, please come up to the mic, state your name.
Good evening, my name's Bruce Schwartz, I live at 28 Muscute North, my property backs up against this proposed subdivision. I've lived there since 1981, and I'm here to request that no other approval be granted at this time. The developer and the engineer is aware that there's an adverse possession situation here involving the prop, my property line and theirs, and they haven't really come forward and tried to resolve it with me. Last time I heard from them was August of '21. And I just, I don't want to see this get approved until this property line issue gets resolved.
When you say that there's an adverse possession, I apologize, I can't see it, I got a large man in front of me. When you say that there's an adverse possession claim, has there been a filing in Supreme Court?
Not yet, but my attorney has been in touch with that. I'm sorry.
You can take the mic with you.
Okay, but there's been no, no filing?
Not at this time. I'm trying to resolve it before that.
Understood, thank you.
Do you have anything else before?
Well, I mean, I have some pictures, I can tell you the whole history, I don't know how much time you want to take on this, but...
No, we'll take whatever it does, I say, just, Paul, you want to respond to that?
He knows who I am, he's been there.
No, because we, you know, we haven't heard anything of people of this nature.
I, last time I spoke with Paul, and was when they were in front of the board, I guess it was three or four years ago, and I tried to resolve the situation, and it hasn't gone anywhere, they're making some crazy demands, what they, what they want me to pay for, which I'm not willing to pay for, like, paying for the resur surveying of their development and so forth and so on, paying for their attorney, which I'm not going to do, I'm willing to pay for my attorney and anything that pertains to me. If I have to resurvey my property, I'll be happy to do that, but I'm not going to pay for what they should be paying for.
Bruce, can you explain, are you encroaching on their property, or they encroaching on your property?
Yes, I'm encroaching on their property.
There's, there's a map up front here, if you can grab the microphone, or Paul, you can point to it to show us where we're at in the world here, please?
I'm 45 feet onto their property.
I, I understand, but there's a drawing here, so we understand where it is.
Mr. Schwartz, right?
I'm Mr. Schwartz.
Okay, so, this is, this is his property here, and he has come back onto, they can't see if you stand in front of it.
That's the right one, because there's another one also.
He's cleared and has a lawn area planted back in, in that area, and that's what he wants to claim and, you know, basically steal, so.
I bought the house in 1981.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, when I bought the house in 1981, from the original owner who built the house, he had pushed the tree line back 45 feet. Right at that tree line, on my side of the tree line, there's a drainage ditch, a culvert, whatever you want to call it, there's a tremendous amount of groundwater that comes down off the hill through my property and my neighbor's property, and I've maintained that all these years. Three years ago, I had a contractor come in and restore it because it wears away after a while from all of the water, and it's now lined with stone and riprap in there, so my backyard doesn't flood anymore. And that's one of the reasons you have the wetlands at the bottom of the hill on Musk, on Balden Place Road, because all this water comes down, and it comes through our property. So, that drainage dish is in that 45 feet that I've been maintaining for all these years. There was a vegetable garden there, when I bought the house, that I maintained for a couple of years, and I didn't want to do it anymore, so I did put a lawn in there, and the fence that surrounded the vegetable garden, which is about 80 feet, is now, and has been since then, along the tree line, so I have a fence up there. And at the end of my driveway, I park, I have four cars, so I park cars there times, I store firewood back there, I, I maintain the property, I've been doing it for 44 years. Prior to these folks, with their proposal, I guess you guys know there was other proposals for this property over the years that have never gone anywhere, and in all those years, no one has ever come to me, including these people, and said, hey, you're, I'm on your property, you got to get off. They've never said one word to me about that, even when I informed them about that, I've never gotten a letter, and nobody ever said to me, you're encroaching. So, as far as I'm concerned, you know, it's my property.
So, did, did they come to you now and say you're on your?
No, I'm here tonight because I got the letter in the mail about the public hearing for this, I didn't know where this was going. There hasn't been any back and forth between us, like I said, since I got, my attorney got this letter in August of '21, when they asked me to pay for either part of, or whatever, resur surveying their whole development there, and wanting me to pay for their, their attorney fees, which I'm not willing to do.
So, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, so, as of right now, nobody's asked you to vacate that property?
No.
Okay, so you're here, you want to preemptively say, hey, I have adverse possession of this property?
Yeah.
I want to, yeah, it's the...
You have to go to the court to get this settled, this has nothing to do with this board, we don't move property lines unless we...
I'm not asking you to move a property line.
But you are.
No, I'm asking you not to give any more approvals until this is resolved.
But they can't...
There's nothing, just so you understand, so the board...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Just so you understand, so the board understands, the board has the right to rely on the submissions that are made by the applicant, they're unopposed, they're uncontested, the board has the right to rely on the boundaries, the meets and bounds descriptions, the surveys, and the certified documents that are before it. Absent in an injunction, or anything else prohibiting this board to act, the board has the legal right to move forward with respect to this.
Even if myself comes up and said, hey, this is a problem here?
Yes.
So I have to, I have to, I have to do what?
Is, is there a survey on this property?
Yeah, this, this is the survey.
Is the survey filed and everything on that property, correct?
Yes.
You shared it with Mr. Schwartz? Or would you share it with him?
Yeah, I mean, it's public record.
You could get a copy in the planning department.
I would suggest you get a copy of that survey.
Well, I, I think it's a separate issue, I mean, I don't think us taking action is going to affect you or your attorney's ability to go to court and to say, hey, look, we've openly and notoriously occupied this property, and we have a right to it, that, that's a separate issue, and I don't think what we do affects that in any way. But if you approve this, and I go to court, and they agree with me, then you've approved an incorrect property line.
And the judge can move the line to where it's supposed, where you say it's supposed to be.
And she can at that time?
Absolutely, so ordered.
And it's not an issue of the ju, of the planning board approving something that's incorrect, right now, it's correct. Until such time as a court determines that it's not, the planning board has the right to act on it.
So I just have to file with the court to let them know that I want to do this, and at that point, you hold this up, or what happens?
Well, listen, none of us can give you legal advice.
I'm not asking for legal, I just don't know what the process is.
I think you need to talk to your attorney, but what I'm trying to say is, you've told me that nobody's telling you or trying to kick you off the property.
Nobody has.
Right, so, I think at this point, it's really something your attorney has to go to court and say, hey, look, we've, we've occupied this land, you used a very specific term, adverse possession, it has a very specific meaning, and you, attorney could handle it, but I don't think it really affects us and our ability to approve this project. These two things can go in parallel.
I'm sorry?
These two issues can exist in parallel, you can go to your attorney and, and follow, you know, his advice, and go do what he or she says.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I happen to be an attorney, so that's...
Okay. I believe you. So if that's, so if nothing else that you folks are going to do tonight with me telling you what's going on?
Can I just ask one question? If your adverse claim were, were approved, does it affect anything in terms of the proposed construction?
No.
It won't affect setbacks?
Nothing, doesn't affect setbacks, we were, we were maintaining a 100-foot buffer from the back of this lot to that, to our property line.
You would have to come back with a revised map, though.
Uh, no.
Not if it's so ordered by a judge, so if they go, and a judge says this line is now here, that's what the line is, it gets filed that way, and, and, and then the county clerk.
By the judge, assuming that, yes.
But you're saying that even if that happened, your setbacks are okay?
Correct.
We, we don't know what the judge, the judge could say, come back to the planning board, you could so order, we don't know, and we couldn't, we shouldn't speculate.
I was trying to save everybody money in going to court with lawyers and so forth, but they just haven't been responsive to this.
When was the last ti, when was the last time your property was surveyed? When was your property last surveyed?
Well, I guess when I bought it, you know, I haven't had it done since then.
And on the original plans, does it state that that part of the property is in your, in your plan?
Say again?
When you bought the property and you had the land surveyed, does it have that distinction in it that that, that goes back that far?
Does it show the extra 45 feet?
Yeah, does it?
In my, on my plan?
Yes.
I'm sure it doesn't. I'm sure it doesn't.
So you're just going by what the former owner had taken, you know, a...
He's the one who did all that.
Possession of, okay.
I'm done.
Unless you have any other questions or comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard?
My name. Yes, I'm at 38 Muscute Road North, and I've been there since 2008, and my situation is exactly like this, like a situation. My situation is the, the property line was pushed back, I believe, when they built the house, that's what I believe, because when I bought the, the property, the property is exactly the way I bought it. I take, there's a loan, I take care of the loan and everything, I thought that was my property, but eventually, it's not, so, and the, and I saw the, the blueprint, the, the prints or whatever, and the, they tried to build the house right, right next to mine, right there, like, probably 20 feet from my house, why can't they push the house back more, because that's a lot of space, why they have to build the house, why don't they on top of mine?
So, so what's your address, and what's your name again, and Paul, could you show us where his piece of property is?
My name is Manuela Oliveira.
Okay.
Are you just downhill of Mr. Schwartz?
No, it's up.
You're uphill.
Yeah, up here.
And your address is?
Excuse me?
Your address?
38?
38.
38 Muscute Road North, and plus, there's a drainage that comes on the top of my house from the, right from the street, on my, my property, down on the back, right to the, to his backyard.
Isn't there a 100-foot buffer at that?
There's a 100-foot buffer, to the property line, and the houses are farther away than that.
It's going to be more than 100 feet from your house, from your property line?
Excuse me?
The house that they're going to propose is more than 100 feet from the property line?
I don't think so.
Yes.
Yeah?
It is.
Because it looks like it's right there, right, right, because I, I saw once, it looks like it's right there.
The property line's 100 feet, and then they have to be setback from that?
From the property line, there's going to be 100 feet.
More than 100.
More than that?
Right, 100 feet to the property line, then they have a setback requirement to the, to the house, so it's more than 100 feet away.
Correct.
But, yeah, this, from here to here is 100 feet, and obviously, the houses are farther away.
Right, but that's from the property line, not from the purported, where you're maintaining grass, so, but it's 100 feet from the property line, that's a distinction that needs to be known, as the board is already aware, but you need to be made aware of that.
But Paul, do we have the same situation as on the former gentleman?
It would not impact us.
Okay.
How about the drainage, because the drainage has to stay there, because the otherwise going to flood my house, it's going to flood everything, because the, the water comes from the, up the hill, it comes down, there's a drainage on the side of my house, goes to the backyard, and goes down. You have to keep that drainage.
Existing conditions, there's nothing that we're doing on that inside of the property, so we wouldn't be changing anything.
It should go there, it should go there.
We wouldn't be discharging over there, so there's, there is, no, we're not going to create any impact.
But they are creating impact now.
Just come up to the microphone.
We are in pretty much the same situation.
There is an impact now, and has been, by the groundwater that comes down our side of that piece of property, it runs behind Manny's house, and through the drainage ditch on my house, and then it goes down through the Boochi's house, and it winds up at Balden Place Road, and I'm sure it shows wetlands all at the bottom on Balden Place Road down there, on the Muscute North side, because it's a swamp down there, and that's where the water comes from, it comes from the top of the hill. They tried to tell me a couple of years ago that the water was coming from Manny's gutters off of his house, which is absurd, you know, the amount of water that comes down, and the, at the speed it comes down, it's, it's, I mean...
But what is the significance of that? What is the significance of the fact that there's water coming down?
I'm sorry?
What is the significance of the fact that there's water coming down?
It floods out our backyard.
I, I understand, but what does that have to do with this public hearing?
It's coming from their property. It's on their property where it originates.
And has it changed over the years?
No.
Existing condition?
That's why I said I had to maintain the swale on my property, that I just loaded upward riprap, to keep my back, backyard from flooding out.
So the, the runoff that you've gotten previously, is it because of anything they did on the property, or because of the topography?
I think it's the topography, you know, because like I said, I'm there 44 years, and it hasn't changed. You know, in the, in the spring, if we have snow, all that water runs off, if it's a heavy rain, I mean, the swale, my swale, is that deep, and it comes right up to the top.
But that basically goes back just to the adverse claim issue, right?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard on, on this? Okay, with that, I would need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Pat, would you prepare a preliminary cluster subdivision resolution?
For preliminary approval, yes we will, and just to be clear, that, that approval will carry with it a stormwater management plan that addresses all of the stormwater impacts associated with the development of the site, not an existing condition that may be a pre-existing circumstance.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is Gilmore Michael and Thomas, 153 Schindagan Hill Road.
Paul Lynch from Putnam Engineering, this is a proposed two-lot subdivision, we presented two plans, one is a sketch plan number one, the other is sketch plan number two. Sketch plan number one meets all the zoning requirements in the town in terms of lot depth, lot width, lot area, for both lots. Sketch plan number two is a much more simplified geometric shape, and we fall short on our lot widths, so if we were to go with sketch subdivision plan number two, that would require variance for lot width from the, from the zoning board. My preference is this plan, plan, plan number two, because it's a much more simplified geometric layout, you don't end up with this appendage in the back of what would be this lot, and then that just becomes forgotten land, and it just, this is just a cleaner layout, but it, it needs the variance, and that's just the way the town ordinance has us calculate lot width, we go to the midpoint of the front, we go to the midpoint of the back, draw a line, get to the midpoint there, make 290 degrees, and that's where we take our measurement.
Now, Paul, before, before we go any further, thank you for that expression, I just, I want to hear from the consultants.
I'm sorry.
Mike, you had a memo on this, correct?
Yeah, what he said is true, one of the plans complies, the other one doesn't, the one that doesn't comply is a more accurate, you know, it's straighter lines, everything works out better, but it's really up to them to decide if they want to do the, the straight lines, and go for the variances, or go with the, the weird shape and, and deal with it.
And Rich, you had a memo on this as well, correct?
So again, I think the applicant's here to discuss the layout first before they move forward, you know, there's some basic, I don't have an objection to the subdivision being presented in either way, it's really the applicant's decision, and then the planning board's decision, there are standard comments there, licensed, you know, surveyed property, you know, they'll pay recreation fee, and they'll have to come back with all the normal subdivision plans going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did, what I would say, Mr. Chairman, is, so, it's not your job to pick and choose an applicant's project, so Paul should have selected an alternative that he preferred, I heard him say it tonight, and advance that, he could have shown the alter, the other alternative to defend his position with respect to the alternative, but we shouldn't be, the plan that was submitted in an either/or is an unacceptable condition for the board, you should have what the applicant prefers to advance as the plan before you. So now that we know he prefers the conventional plan, I would suggest remove the other plan from the drawing, Paul, and advance that plan.
And variances are required, obviously.
And variances will be required, there's a few technical comments with respect to that, but, give us information about site distances, driveway, the typical things, but there's, I noticed, Paul, that there's a, it looks like there's a, yeah, a road or something that's depicted in the back, what's that about?
There was a file map, I think it was number 749, that dates back forever, where there was a logging trail, that came through this lot, went onto the adjoining subdivision property, and then circulates and comes all the way back to the Gilmore property, so there was a file map that has this logging trail, they call it, it's depicted road, but it benefits nobody, and our clients are actually working with, I believe, this property owner to have it extinguished, because it serves no benefit.
Is there an easement or anything, Paul, in place, or is it just on a map?
On a map.
So it's not written in the deed?
Was it a hand, was it a handwritten? It, it, it dates back to like the 1800s, and it was a handwritten?
So it's in the schedule?
No, it got lost over time, but it's referenced.
It's not in the meets and bounds' schedule for the property?
No.
Yeah, Paul, I think, so, it would be our preference to make that go away?
Yes.
So I can work with Joe and find out the right mechanism to make it go away.
Because in essence, it's an easement to get from this part of their property to the back part of their property, which crosses over an adjoining neighbor, and it, it's not required, it's not needed, and it serves no benefit at this point in time.
So, you confused me, you just said it's an easement, so there is an easement?
Well, it's, it's, it's on a file map, so it's...
You're just referring to it as an easement?
Yes.
Okay.
It's generic.
I got you, okay. So you, you'll have to, you know, revise?
Correct.
With your preferred plan?
We're going to come back with this.
Remove that trail from it, wherever you can, and then we'll, we'll take it to the next step.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat, we would hold until we see the revised plan, we wouldn't be declaring anything. All right, next up on the agenda is Frey subdivision, this is on for a resolution?
John Correll, representing Scott Frey, I understand we're up for a resolution?
Yes, sir.
That would be nice.
Mike, you had no comments, correct?
Yeah, this is on for a resolution, all my comments have been addressed.
Rich, no comments?
It's on for a resolution, the only thing that was outstanding was a bond, that's supposed to be included in the resolution, I sent that information to Pat, but both, Pat and I did not bring the numbers, Jack, if you remember it, we'd like to have it written in, but otherwise, it was something like $15,000 with a $5,000 engineering fee, but it was submitted by Jack and approved by the engineering department, it just came late in the week, so that needs to be included as part of the resolution, so, or should be.
Do you remember the number, Jack, offhand?
No.
So what I would suggest is, you can, you can say add the number that was agreed upon by the engineers. Right now, there's a placeholder in the resolution, so you can just reference this.
Okay.
So you have two resolutions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
The neg-deck and the subdivision approval.
Does the board have any questions? If not, I'll need a motion, I'm sorry, was there, if not, I'll need a motion to adopt the secret negative declaration approval.
I'll offer the resolution of the planning board of Town of Carmel, number 25-03, January 9, 2025, tax map number 74 dot 12 dash 1 dash 33, Frey subdivision, secret determination of significant, significance, negative declaration.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll, I'll need a motion to adopt final subdivision approval with a placeholder for the fees agreed to by the engineering department.
So Chairman, I'll make a, a resolution, final subdivision approval, resolution of the planning board of the Town of Carmel, number 25 dash 04, January 9, 2025, tax map number 74 dot 12 dash 1 dash 33, Frey subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, please don't break the equipment.
You're up too, Jack, next?
Yeah.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is Franco Curri Poma, 108 Barrett Hill Road.
Lean to carry.
We'll take a pause.
You're only on for resolutions, you don't need...
You may not be on for a resolution.
We need an engineer to help. That's true.
There we go.
Don't breathe next one.
Okay, so this is on for, this is on for a resolution, Mike, I believe you had no comments as well?
No comments on this, this is a regrading, and it's on for resolution.
Well, comments have been addressed.
You have the regrading resolution before you, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. All right, so I'll need a motion to adopt regrading appro, unless there's any questions from the board? Do we have any on this? Then I'll need a motion to adopt a regrading approval resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the resolution of the planning board of Town of Carmel, number 25, Tac 07, dated 9, January 2025, reference tax map number 53, decimal 17, Tac 1, Tac 27, 108, that's 108, Barrett Hill Road, regrading plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Hope I can keep that up.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is Americo Sereno, 206 East Lake Boulevard. This is on for final site plan resolution.
All my comments have been addressed. This is on for final approval.
Same here.
And you have a resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything you have for the board? Any questions from the board, others?
No.
Nope.
Okay, then I'll need a motion to adopt final site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the resolution of the Planning Board of the Town of Carmel, number 25-06, January 9, 2025. Tax map number 65 dot 17 dash 1 dash 6. Sereno Boathouse, 206 East Lake Boulevard, final site plan.
Second.
Paul, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Marcel Cirillo, 1849 Route 6. This is on for a final site plan approval resolution.
Good evening.
Okay, again, this is on for a resolution. Do I get no comments?
Same, it's on for a resolution. All my comments have been addressed.
All comments addressed.
And you have the resolution for it.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
I don't know why. Pat, do you have the resolution?
He's got it.
You've got it?
He's got it.
Okay.
Let's make sure.
I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a resolution to approve tax map number 55 dash 10 dash 1 dash 16. Cirillo, 1849 Route 6, final site plan approval.
Second.
Paul, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are you all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we wanted to do a recess for this?
Yeah, we're going to take a quick recess just to set up for the next applicant. Okay, we're going to continue now. Next on the agenda is New York S M S A Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, Glen Coman Lake. This is on for a... To adopt a secret negative declaration resolution. We have no comments from Mike?
I have no comments. It's on for a seeker.
Same here, no comments.
And you have the draft resolution before you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Górdios, anything you want, just go over?
I have a little trouble hearing you, but if the question was whether we had any comments, no, we do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, if not, then I will need a motion to adopt the secret negative declaration resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of the Planning Board of the Town of Carmel, 25-02, January 9, 2025. Tax map 87 dot 5 dash 1 dot 90, or dash 90. New York Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless and Homeland Towers LLC. Glen Coman Lake, site plan, secret determination of significance, negative declaration.
I second.
Okay, we'll do it here. We're going to need a roll call vote. Pat, would you take the roll call, please? Sure. Let's go, John.
Hi, Finnegan.
Bob.
Hi.
Ray.
Hi.
Vicky.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman.
Hi.
Six oh.
Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you. Okay, Centennial has been removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to Site Plan Carmel Residential, 119 Seminary Hill Road. This is a residential site plan.
Thanks for ducking.
Evening. Yeah, Zach Pearson, Inside Engineering, here on behalf of the owner, N E S L S E, LLC, for Carmel Residential. Just to, I guess I'll get refreshed where we left off with you guys. Before you, in October, I heard the board's concerns, got the consultant memo comments, heard that, you know, the visual aspect or aesthetics of this was an issue that we needed to study further. Studied or did an additional balloon test in a leaf-off condition and provided an updated aesthetics resources.
Can I just... I'll pause you there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mike, you want... I know you had a memo and comments.
Yep. First, I have to correct the first comment. I said, is there a reason they only answered two of my comments? There were two separate replies. I only saw the one, I think it was for the subdivision, not for the site plan, so they did answer them, but they... I spoke to Mike in Highway, Mike Stern. I asked him about the road, and he said he's not interested in having a road of that nature, so I don't know if you can talk to your client. They don't want to maintain this road, so they can go back to design this as a non... As a private road, as opposed to a town or whatever kind they were going to do. And the other thing was, we spoke about the fire department. I can't think who I spoke to in your office. Dawn?
Yeah.
And Dawn said they spoke to the fire department. I just asked for something in writing for the file, so we can put it in there. Otherwise, all the other answers we discussed, and we were talking about buffers by the basketball court, it looks like they're willing to do something over there.
Yeah, we did some vegetated screening on there. I believe it's 35 feet and planted.
Yeah, if you live next door and there's a kid out there boing, boing, boing all day, that could drive you a little nuts, so I guess that's pretty much why I was asking for that.
Right, and we just... We did meet with the fire department ahead of our initial submission. That was kind of summarized in our first submission, but we can certainly get that in writing.
And they'll just give you tips on where to put the hydrants, and maybe if they have a problem with your turnaround, you know, that would be the only other issue.
Yeah, all the stuff was on the plans already, but we can get their clarification, yeah.
There's something about additional parking spaces as well, correct?
Yeah, they did that, though. They added additional parking, and they have parking by the clubhouse as well, so there is additional guest parking.
Just real quick, we added three spaces up near the turnaround. This was additional parking that was added in this location, and we pushed a little bit out there as well. I forget the total additional, I think it was a 12 or...
It's a bunch, but it's not required. It's just that every one of these developments, I get the calls, my neighbor had a party, and there were cars parked up and down the road, and we couldn't get by, and, you know, so that's why I asked for a little extra. Maybe in the new code, when we're doing it, we're going to require an extra half a spot per unit, and that'll fix it, too.
Do you have anything else, Mike, you want to...
That's it, I'm sorry.
Now, Rich, I know you had...
Well, I have comments. This is still in a preliminary phase on the grand scheme of things. So two applications were submitted. One is for a subdivision, one is for a site plan. I'm pretty anal. I like to have the whole subdivision, no matter what's backing it up, be submitted as an entire package. In this case, I had to go back and forth between the site plan and whatnot, and so kind of addressing what Mike said. He was answering questions that he asked, but they were answered in the site plan versus the subdivision, so it was kind of a little confusing that way, and would like to have a submission as a full submission. I know it kills more trees, but it keeps it clean. As for the subdivision, you know, there's comments there that need to be moving forward, but it's more the site plan that we want to talk about. They've started addressing the comments. The road is one of the big issues that, I guess, Mike just talked to Superintendent Stern about ownership. If, you know, the other thing is, is the town going to own the water and sewer here, right? If it's not going to be a town road, the town may not take ownership of the water and sewer. That's the thing. The stormwater infrastructure would be the homeowners' association. You have those type of issues that kind of need to be talked about and addressed. The other issue is, in one of my... In my memo for the site plan, ultimately, both the sewer and water, we're going to add, and for traffic, we're going to ask for escrow to be put up so that it can be assessed. It's not assessing the plan that insight is put forward. They know what they're doing with that. It's an assessment of the capacity of our infrastructure. That sewerage is going to go to a pump station. Don't know if that pump station is sufficient for it. We did that for Centennial. This isn't the first time we've looked at that. When you have, you know, subdivisions and site plans of this nature, it's a different ballgame. Single-family homes or four or five-bedroom homes, different story than what they're adding here. So that assessment of our infrastructure needs to really be looked at. We have, you know, again, we have a comprehensive plan that's coming out there that says, you know, build, baby, build in our sewer and water areas, but our sewer and water areas can only handle so much. Can only give you so much water. I can't... You can't turn on the tap and have more water. Vicky can attest to that over on Duke Drive. She has her issues when they built that over there, right? So those are the bigger comments that need to be looked at, so I would recommend maybe starting with the escrow to move forward with sewer and water. I think the road dedication is a big thing. Maybe they want to meet with the superintendent. The suggestion on the road dedication, if it's not going to be dedicated to the town, I would still build it to town specs. Someday in the future, maybe the future, the next superintendent may want it, but, you know, it'll be a different animal, and they have to do more work as a homeowners' association. Put the money up front now, and then they don't have to worry about it in the future. But again, that's up to the developer, and that's up to all the various people that'll be involved. That's what I got right now.
All right, thank you.
And in October, Mr. Chairman, when they made the initial submission, the first thing you started considering was how to deal with seeker. So obviously, you have two routes to pursue an application like this, moving toward a negative declaration, or a positive declaration where they would do a full environmental impact statement. This is a large project, so you've given the developer the benefit of the doubt by saying, "We have some issues." Tell us about those issues. So first and foremost, one related to the aesthetic issues associated with the project. So Zach, I'm sure he'll talk about it in a minute. They've done some work with respect to that. It needs to be done... There's a little more work that needs to be done with respect to that. But I think it would be prudent to bring in, as Rich indicated, our engineering consultants and our traffic consultants to help us with the discussion of whether they need an impact statement or not. So that's an ongoing conversation, and I think that's... In the meantime, we can make progress on some of these technical issues as well, so we're not delaying anybody or anything, but ultimately, you're going to have to get your arms around whether or not you're requiring an environmental impact statement or not.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple things. What's... Rich, what's the mechanism for the escrow to get that started? Just is it through the board?
Well, Rose will be in on Monday. You work with Rose. I think there's a value of typically 7,500 bucks for each of the... I don't know what we do for traffic, but for water and sewer, it's about 7,500 bucks. You'll submit all the paperwork as part of what you're doing specifically for water and sewer, which you have individual reports, but you'd need the supporting documentation for it. They'll review that, make comments to it, and then you'll have to start addressing those comments.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's kind of like the traffic consultant step down for water and sewer.
Yeah, so just to refer... I mean, we provided an expanded EAF with our initial submission. That was, I don't know how many pages it was, 300 pages. You know, the traffic discussion is in there and addressed... Well, we... No, we think it's addressed. The visual analysis, which we heard at the initial meeting from you guys, was a concern that needed more information, and we provided some, and we can talk about that. You know, there's a lot of documentation there that we really haven't gotten a lot of comments on to date, and I know that the water and sewer is going to be, you know, pushed out to consultants with escrow. We totally understand that, but there's a significant amount of info.
So I'll confirm, they submitted a quality package of information, but we need to go through that in a very deliberate, methodical manner to make sure we're making the right decisions here, so...
Oh, understood.
It's not criticism, Zach, what you submitted, it's that we may need to repackage that or develop it in a more thorough manner.
Understood, understood. So just if you want me to get into the visual stuff a little bit, or I can take questions from the board, however.
Yeah, let's take some questions. The board, if you have any questions.
The basketball court, how close is it to the closest structure?
Closest to that existing court, right?
Yeah.
And my eyes are to the left is the existing.
Yeah. It's like 120... Over 100 feet.
Over 100 feet.
The existing... This existing building here? Yeah, it's 100 feet.
Topographically, is it higher or lower? I think the basketball court would be higher, right?
We're above that.
You were above.
Above, correct, yep.
Can you turn to the page that shows the... You had sketched in a roof line from the view from Route 6?
Yeah, absolutely. The visual?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
No, this is from Cannon Street.
No. Okay, 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 got it.
Right, and I think this was actually one of Pat's comments, number 10. So this label, proposed townhomes beyond, right? So these trees that you see directly behind Polte, this is the elevation of the buildings beyond those trees that you see right tight to the back of the existing development.
The solid line is the new development's roof line?
Yes, the solid blue line is the buildings placed where they would sit looking beyond. Yes, the solid blue line is the buildings placed where they would sit looking beyond, right? The red dots is the grade, but as you can see in the image, obviously, like, this one's an easy one, for example, right? There's not going to be a building over top of an existing building. It sits behind those, behind this building, behind the trees that are right tight to the back of the development.
But there's a, there's an extensive amount of new development at, just below the bridge line that will be visible from Route 6 that is not there now, right?
No, there's trees here that's not, that are not, there's trees between us and this property. This, we sit beyond.
Lower.
And it goes up and back down. We sit, we sit, we gave this a representative of where it would be, but if you can see the trees right beyond this.
So I got confused.
So we could have presented this and just showed, you won't see it.
Is Polte in the foreground or background?
Polte's in the foreground. See all the houses, all the houses here? That's all in the foreground.
So maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but I'm under the impression that that solid blue line is the roof line that will be visible from?
It's the roof, it's the roof line at the elevation beyond where this development is.
It's like a gnoll, so it comes up and then back down and back up. It's in the lower spot, so the buildings in front are here, the buildings that they're building are below and behind, and then the hill goes up behind that.
Right, so effectively, this part of the hill, this hill is kind of even with where Polte is, but these trees, you know?
So you're saying you put the line there just so we know where the line is, but in fact, we wouldn't really see that line?
Correct.
If you drew the line where the property is?
Correct.
So you couldn't see those houses from that angle if you're driving down Route 6?
Correct. The trees, based on the study that was done, the trees?
They're higher than the actual roof.
Right, the trees in through here, which are, which are tight to the back of the existing development, are not, we're not touching those, they're not on the property.
So how do we get a visual? I don't mean to be pejorative, but without that confusion, how do we, how do we get a visual of what this thing looks like or doesn't look like from Route 6? In other words, I'm concerned and uncomfortable?
I understand.
If the construction that is now Polte is going to be duplicated on that ridge lining to be visible from Route 6. How do you satisfy the visual that I'm concerned with?
Yeah.
Do an elevation and show them on the elevation how it is.
There's a cross section that can be done. There's a cross section that can be done from this intersection to and through the Polte development, to our development.
Was there a balloon test performed?
Yeah, there was a balloon test performed.
We were there, and it was very windy.
Leaf on and leaf off.
Yeah, we were there in November.
Could you take a view from this view you're presenting tonight? Do you have a photo of that balloon from there?
I don't, you wouldn't see it.
No, we were, we were there when the balloon test was going on, and it was so windy, you couldn't even, you know, the balloons were going back and forth, even lost a couple balloons. And we had asked for this type of drawing to the gentlemen who were there, but?
Yeah, John Dogg.
What I'm seeing is, it's not telling the story, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand, I understand your concern.
Yeah.
It's telling a story in that this is what, the elevations of the houses as they would be beyond the development, correct?
Zach, if you link this to cross sections through there?
Exactly, I get it.
I think that's the way to display the information.
If it's a cross, you know, a cross section from here to where it is linked with the image, you'll see that, you know, these proposed houses would be hundreds of feet beyond the Polte development, right? This looks like it's, they're going to be right behind.
The beyond is not the issue, it's, do I see them?
Understood.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's very complex because it's on a ridge. It's on the other ridge behind Polte's ridge, so you've got to get a better understanding of that. It's not coming through on these images. So I think, Zach, there's a little bit more work you could do with this to help us understand that.
Sure.
Yeah, and does the tree line change because you're cutting away the hill behind it for the development there?
The tree line changes on our development. It doesn't change between us.
Polte and?
Correct, right.
Zach, could I offer another suggestion? Perhaps if you were to model this with, just a simple sketch-up model with the topography, that's three-dimensional, and you can sort of move it around, and you could bring in, you know, that image for us, and we could sort of manipulate it? That may help, just a thought, if that's, if you have that capability.
Sure.
We do have computers and TVs you can use, so.
Wild.
Pat, you had made a comment about lowering the ridge line and that it would broaden the topography, making it more visible, so is that going to be addressed by this cross sectional view as well?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, if, right, and if there are concerns, how would you mitigate them?
Okay.
So that's exactly the point. And so Zach hasn't talked about it, but?